Welcome to the January 12, 2021, meeting of the Stow Board of Selectmen. With me here tonight, I have Jim Salvi, Courtney Frecher, Megan Berch-McMichael, Denise Nemkowski, and Ellen Sturgis is zooming in tonight. First up is public input on anything that we don't have on our agenda tonight. So if, raise your virtual hand, and if you are going to speak, please make sure you unmute. Is there any public input tonight? Then, moving on, Chairman's comments, I'm going to be brief tonight, but I just want to say one Happy New Year to everybody. And after the terrible issues that we had last week in Washington, I just want to say that I'm really grateful that I have a great group of colleagues to work with here on the Board of Selectmen, and thank you guys very much. You know, it was terrible in Washington, but you guys are great. Next up, we have a recognition. And tonight, we are recognizing Rosemary Braun. And I will read the citation that we have prepared, but Rosemary has worked at the library for many years, and she's been a great asset to the town. On this, "The 12th day of January 2021, the Stow Board of Selectmen hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Rosemary Braun for 25 years of service to the town of Stow as library page for the Randall Library. Rosemary has always worked behind the scenes, often early in the morning, returning books to the shelves in Randall Library. She is a quiet person and takes pride in her work. She may have gone unrecognized because she hasn't worked behind the desk, but her efforts have kept the library shelves well-stocked and in perfect order. She is a gem to the Randall Library and the town of Stow, talented artist, phenomenal quilter, and died in the World Red Sox fan. On behalf of the town, the Board of Selectmen wishes Rosemary an enjoyable retirement filled with good health, happiness, enjoyment of family, and time to devote to her quilting and her favorite baseball team."
And so Tina, our library member, is on, and she wants to say her words.
Yes, Tina, please.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I have been working with Rosemary since I started. And she really does keep the library going. She is in early in the morning before anybody gets there, and she really has cared so much about everything in the library, the patrons, down to every little book, and she will be missed. I mean, she cares so much if Penny's little thing is out of order. She's passionate about what she does, including her quilts, which she has shared with us many, many times, and we will really miss her. So we wish her well, and it'll be hard to replace her.
Thank you, Professor. Ellen, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Rosemary. Have you got, any of you guys met her, or no?
I have.
Actually, Tom?
Ah, Ellen.
So I actually, many years ago, I was working with the friends at the library and worked with Rosemary then, and got to see her in action as the behind-the-scenes person that Tina was just talking about. She really, she's a delightful person, and she was a great spirit to have around the library, and she actually donated some of her truly amazing quilts as fundraisers as well, and that was above and beyond the call, I think. And then, her famous one of Fenway Park actually got some, at least statewide, attention, which I hope that she'll spend more time making quilts, because she's super talented. So, we will miss her, and thank you, Rosemary.
In that case, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Selectmen approve and sign a certificate for retiring Randall Library Page, Rosemary Baum.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Ellen? Do we have a?
Aye.
Ellen says aye, I saw it. All right. And Rosemary can pick up her certificate that has been duly signed, and she can pick it up at the Town Building, or she can talk to Denise, and Denise can get it mailed out to her, if she'd rather not come into the Town Building. Thank you, Rosemary. Next up, we have two appointments that have been recommended by Chief Joe Landry of the Fire Department. What he would like to do is appoint Barry Evers to the position of Call Lieutenant, and also Jonathan Gray to the position of Call Fire Lieutenant. Denise, you have a copy of the paper, if you just want to inform everybody?
Just want me to read through the?
He said you have a copy of his.
I respectfully recommend, for your consideration, Barry Evers and Jonathan Gray for appointment to Call Lieutenant for the Stow Fire Department. Both Barry and Jonathan, along with two other members, have completed the promotional process as outlined in the department's general order 400-04, promotional process. Barry Evers has been an active member of the Stow Fire Department since 2001. He is currently a full-time firefighter EMT, and has previously held the position of Call Lieutenant. Barry brings with him a wealth of institutional knowledge, as well as a passion for leadership, which is evident by his development and oversight of our current firefighter cadet program. I recognize Barry as the current informal leader of the organization, and recognize the great potential in him for those who will guide, for those he will guide with his promotion. Jonathan Gray has also been a longstanding member of the organization. John was appointed as a Call Firefighter in 2005, at just 16-years-old. For a short period between 2015 and 2017, John moved away and separated from the department. Since his return, he has attended the Mass Fire Academy Fire Officer One, Two Weeks Full Time Program to better prepare himself for this opportunity. Although John has not held previous leadership roles within the organization, I do feel that he is a well-respected, active member, and has the ability and knowledge to support and develop members of the Stow Fire Department. I appreciate your consideration for both members, of both members for Call Lieutenant. Please feel free to contact. I think that kind of says it all. Do you know if Jonathan or Barry are on there?
No, not on this.
Probably not. So in that case, that being said, if there, is there any discussion on that? I don't see anything from Ellen, so in that case, I will entertain a motion for appointment of Barry Evers to the position of Call Fire Lieutenant.
I move to appoint Barry Evers as Call Lieutenant for the Stow Fire Department, effective immediately for the remainder of a one-year term, expiring June 20, 2021, and subject to reappointment at that time.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ellen?
Ellen's raising her hand.
Ellen has raised her hand. I will accept a motion for the appointment of Jonathan Gray.
I move to appoint Jonathan Gray as Call Lieutenant for the Stow Fire Department, effective immediately for the remainder of a one-year term, expiring June 30, 2021, and subject to reappointment at that time.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I heard from Ellen. All right. I think we're pretty much actually right on time now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and thank John and Barry.
Thank you all.
All right. The next, next order of business is a public hearing for the transfer of liquor license for Ken's Liquor Shop. And, let's see. I'll begin by reading the notice of public hearing that has been published. It was posted on 12/15/2020 in the Stow Independent. And notices, notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Ken's Liquor Shop, Inc., 8 Hudson Road, Stow, has applied for a transfer of liquor license to AL&amp;BC, Inc., 8 Hickory Lane, Hudson, Mass. 01749. A public hearing will be held on the license transfer application on Tuesday, January 12, 2021, at 7:15 in the Stow Town Building, 380 Great Road, Stow, Mass., with attendance via Zoom suggested. Thomas E. Ryan III, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and that was published in the Stow Independent on December 23, 2020. So in order to open this public hearing, I will, if someone can read the motion to open the public hearing, and then we will do a roll call vote.
I move that the public hearing for transfer of liquor license for Ken's Liquor Shop, Incorporated, be opened.
Second. All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the public hearing is now open, and we will entertain comments from the public, because that's, this is a public hearing.
May I just speak for the applicant? If you have any applicant questions.
If, if the applicant is on, they can raise.
Yes, someone.
Can hear.
Yes, this is Tony.
I think the alien.
Yes.
Is there anything you would like to? Say, Tony.
Well, I'm looking forward to having a business in Stow. I'm well-demanding, and living Hudson. My father had a store made many years ago, and my uncle Fred had the store in Stow where Brussels is now. So I'm just looking forward to, you know, working with the town and to have another business there.
My understanding, I think you have other businesses?
Yes, I do. We have one in Hudson, and we have another one in Acton. In Acton, we have a full liquor license that we've had for two years now, and in Hudson, we have a beer and wine license, and that location, they've had us since 2000. And I did have a little beach before in Hudson also, in 91 to 97, with a beer and wine license also.
Do we have any other comments from the public?
My name's Christopher Yates of Fletcher, Tilden, and Hudson. I am counsel for the Bouchemys, for their entities that are purchasing the property in Stow, so I'm here for any legal questions that you may have relating to the package that we submitted on the number 13. There are any?
Or have any questions on the package that we submitted? One question.
Jim?
Administrator.
Oh, all right.
Is that, is that appropriate now?
I, I think it's appropriate.
Denise, I saw the application for the Corey checks in the packet. Obviously, I didn't see the results. That seems appropriate, may I assume, that there's nothing to be concerned about?
So we do not run the Corey checks on these, the ABCC does. So the Corey checks, this whole packet will go to the ABCC, and they will run them.
All right. So our approval is contingent on ultimate approval by the ABCC?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
It does appear there are.
Are there any other comments from members of the board?
I just wanted to say one thing. I had talked to Denise about this before, not about this particular one, but talking to the, who, it would be the ABCC, about now that our population is growing, as to whether or not we are now at a third liquor license for a package store in the town, and so she is taking a look at that as well. Because my, my only concern and question about transferring the liquor license was that I knew that there were other businesses that had been trying to get that package license, but I think we are now at the point where we can start looking at whether or not we can expand our number of licenses, so.
Any other comments? One of the things I did notice is Larry Minosh, who currently owns Ken, he was on. I don't know if you have anything you want to say, Larry?
No. I'm just about time to retire.
All right. I like him. I, I want to too, but I can't.
Fifty-one years.
Yep. All right, if there are no.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Congratulations.
If there are no other comments, I suppose I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that the public hearing for transfer of liquor license for Ken's Liquor Shop, Incorporated, be closed.
Second. Roll call vote. All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And after that, do we have any other discussion about the transfer of the license amongst ourselves, then? In that case, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the transfer of the liquor license of Ken's Liquor Shop, Incorporated, to AL&amp;BC, Incorporated, as described in the application, received November 16, 2020, and subject to final approval by the Massachusetts Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission, ABCC. Further, I move that the board sign the local licensing authority review record for submission to the ABCC with the application.
Second. Over. Aye.
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Welcome back to Joe, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Larry, for great business. Glad you keep changing hands and not going away.
Brother, you have the word for me now.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, we have a few items for discussion. First up is the acceptance of a $100 donation to the cemetery perpetual care account in appreciation for the excellent work that G.H. Gladhill has performed in maintaining his cemetery plot at Brookside Cemetery from William W. Schrader. The cemetery committee voted to approve the donation on December 9, and because it is a donation to the town, the board has to accept it, and I'm guessing that we won't turn down money, and there's probably not going to be a lot of discussion, so I will accept the motion, please.
I move to accept a donation of $100 from William Schrader for the cemetery perpetual care account.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ellen?
I'm waiting my end, Jill.
All right. I didn't think you were going to turn down $100.
No. G.H. would not be happy with that.
Next up, something that we have been waiting for, for quite a while. We will have a discussion and vote on the position for Chief of Police. As you know, on Saturday, we interviewed two candidates for the Chief of Police position. This started out as a process under the guidance of Denise, Town Administrator, with 31 candidates that we received a couple months ago. It seems like forever ago. After we got the, after we got the 31 responses, or applications, we whittled it down to 13 that we ended up sending out a list of questions to, and then we invited a number of people to come in, and we had interviews on the, on the committee side. And at that point, we selected three finalists. And as you know, on Saturday, we interviewed two of them after one of them had withdrawn, and so we are down to two. And we, after our Saturday meeting, we decided to put off discussion and any vote until tonight. One of the things by charter that we will, we need also is a recommendation from our Town Administrator, so tonight, what I'm planning on doing is, we'll start off with Denise's recommendation. I'm going to make my recommendation, and we will just go around in a circle, and Ellen, because you're not here, you get to go last. So, that, that being said, if nobody has a problem with that, I will ask for Denise's recommendation of the two finalists that we interviewed the other day. One, which was Richard Briggs, who was a lieutenant in the Ashland Fire Department, and the other one is Acting Chief Mike Solisi of the Stow PD. Oh.
Yes, so I would say, great work by the two candidates that made it to finals. We really did vet the candidates. We did a very thorough process. I was thoroughly impressed with the in-person interviews on Saturday. I think both came very well-prepared. I think they were ready to have a very good discussion with the board, and I do think that's what took place. That being said, my recommendation for the police chief is Michael Solisi. In the short time that I've known and worked with him, I found him to be rational, fair, supportive of the employees, and really ready to embrace and grow in the position of police chief. I've heard stories and accusations about him being, being tough on kids and not giving them a break. I've done my research. There are no disciplinary actions in his personnel file. There have not been any internal investigations. There has been no letters against him. I would expect that any young go-getter officer is the one out there making the stops, writing the tickets, making the arrests, trying to make a name for themselves. So I don't think that that's out of the ordinary, that he, you know, had sort of a reputation back in the day. I think that over the course of his career, and likely the last 10 years, he's grown dramatically in his role as a police officer into the position of sergeant, and I can say that even from September to now, I've seen him grow as acting chief, the way he's approached decisions and the way he's approached and handled situations. Any interactions that I have had with him are exactly as I would have expected from my longtime chiefs in other communities. I think Mike is ready to be chief. I truly think he's the right person to be the next chief in Stow, and I do think he's going to make a great chief here for us. So my recommendation is for Mike Solisi.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Very eloquent. And tonight, I'm going to start the discussion of this topic by recommending that we also, that we appoint Acting Mike, Acting Chief Mike Solisi as our next permanent chief of police. Mike Solisi grew up in Stow, started his public service while still in high school within the Neshoba EMS. He's been with the depart, with the Stow PD for 23 ye, 23 years, starting as a dispatcher, then becoming a police officer, and has been a detective sergeant for the last five years. Mike grew up in Stow, is passionate about Stow, and knows Stow well. Mike has been acting chief now for eight months, stepping forward when needed in very difficult times. Acting Chief Solisi kept the police department not only functioning during this time, but also started the healing process internally for a demoralized police department, and with a shocked public. He moved the department forward with some much-needed policy changes, engaged with the public and social justice groups this summer during the Black Lives Matter demonstrations, doing a great job for the town. This point, we've received over 30 letters of enthusiastic support for Acting Chief Solisi, with the common theme is their support and recommendation for Mike to be appointed as our next chief. These leaders have come from town residents, town employees, police department employees, the Neshoba Regional School District Superintendent, and some from out of town. Many detail the positive impact their interactions with Mike had, sometimes under difficult circumstances. Mike has shown he is a leader, a true professional, and has moved the department forward in a positive fashion. He wants to continue to move the department forward, has the respect of the police department and the community, and is our best choice for a new chief of police. After our interviews the other day, one of the things that struck out quite, struck me quite a bit was his comment that he'd like to keep the department focused on, "Who did you help today?" I thought that was a great thing, because that's what the police department is supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be helping the residents of the town and the Commonwealth. So that's, that's, those are my thoughts. Megan, you're up.
It's my turn. As a member of the subcommittee, I have been part of this process from the very beginning. The reason I wanted to be a part of the process was because I wanted to be as thoughtful as possible as a new select person, as someone who's still fairly new to town. I felt like I could give that perspective, given the reasons why we were having to hire a new police chief in the first place. I will say that the interviews on Saturday were both so much better than the initial interviews. I think that nerves had gotten maybe the better of people in the confidential ones, and so I did still want to take the time to get input from people in town. I felt like that was important, though I definitely came out of Saturday feeling a lot more confident and comfortable. I think it was when this candidate made the statement that, that he wants to continue mentoring other officers, and understood that part of his job was not only just to be a good cop and out in the public all the time, but also to be mentoring that next generation of officers, sort of spoke to me a lot. I felt like that's really what we're looking for in a chief. It's also really important to me that the person who's going to be in this role is going to be able to start on the ground, and I think that he is. So I am happy to recommend Acting Chief Michael Solisi for the permanent position of police chief. I think he's learning, he's willing to learn, he's willing to make necessary changes, and I think he's willing to listen to the people of this town. I think that I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to work with him.
Courtney?
I would like to recommend Detective Sergeant Acting Chief Mike Solisi for the position of, of police chief. I found both the interviews on Saturday to be fairly impressive. I liked the other candidate and thought it was well-spoken, and it was a tough decision for me, even though I had gone into the process being, I thought I had pretty much made my mind up before the interviews, to choose Mike Solisi. So going into the interview process, I felt that Mike Solisi, being our acting chief, having done an excellent job so far, and with his longtime commitment to the town and the tone of his interactions, which to me is, is of huge importance. I've always found him to be, he seems quite kind and compassionate, which I think are really important characteristics in a policeman. It's a, I cannot even imagine. It's a, I, I cannot even imagine how difficult a job it is at times, and I think treating these, these subjects or these interactions with kindness and compassion is probably the, the highest good that I can choose. So I commend Mike Solisi for his ability to, to behave that way, and I am delighted to think of him as our police chief.
Jim?
When I really sat down to think about this, I realized that I'm making my decision on basically five factors. The first factor is technical competence. Do they have adequate experience? Do they show a willingness to manage through policies and training? Do they, are they committed to transparency and accountability? Are they committed to helping officers through difficult periods? Both candidates met this requirement well. I have to give the nod, though, to Mike Solisi on this one, because he spoke not just about what he would do, but he gave me a better idea of how he would do it. He gave me a better idea of how he would do these things and infuse them into the culture of the department. He spoke about ethical training, a criminal review board. He spoke about leading by example. I'm not going to ask him to do something I won't do myself. He talked, he talked about not making a decision from down the hall, but making it from the street. And, and most importantly on this factor, not just providing counseling, but taking away the stigma about seeking help, which is the big barrier, and that was a, a smart thing to say. Change is very important, and my second and third factors are about change. The second factor is the sort of change that every police department in this country has to start going through about equity and use of force. Mike gets the nod on that, because he's already started doing that, and he's doing a very effective job. I think we've seen that in some of the comments that we received. I don't need to really belabor that. Then there's a type of change that is particular to the Stowe Police Department, not for the men and women of the department. That's unfair. But as we said on Saturday, or as I said on Saturday, I think the role of police chief and the person who's police chief has to be reintroduced to this town and redefined. Again, I think that Mike has already started to do that and is very qualified to do it. I have to say that I was impressed by Lieutenant Briggs, and that this requirement, which I consider to be an extremely difficult one, I think he could do it. But to be honest, I think Mike could do it a bit better. And for this town right now, I think Mike is the choice on that factor. Fourth factor is I gotta, I gotta get an idea of what this person's all about. One of the people who wrote in called it "heart," and that's a good way to label it. And normally, I wouldn't care about this too much for a police chief, but I do under these circumstances. Lieutenant Briggs's answers were very, very good, but they focused generally on policies and training. We had to make an effort to kind of bring him out to talk about his own experiences and his own philosophies. Mike is not that way. It, it is much easier to get an idea of where he's coming from. I got a much better feel for him, not just about what he would do, but why it was so important to him. I had, I got the feeling that he has been itching to do these kinds of things for years, and that he has given it a tremendous amount of thought, and that he is already ready to be the kind of outward-facing chief that we have wanted for quite a while. And my fifth factor is consistency of character, and I'm referring to the various letters and recommendations that we got. To be frank, I'm not impressed, well, I, I am impressed, but I'm not really considering the number. Mike's the hometown guy. I would expect letters. It's not a popularity contest. But what I am very impressed with is the consistency of the picture that all of these letters paint. Clearly, all of them independently drafted, yet consistently tell me that, well, they all tell the same story, about a guy who has experienced a lot of personal growth and has learned from it, who takes community policing very seriously, who shows up when you don't expect a cop to show up, and who takes seriously stuff that you don't expect him to take seriously, and stops when he sees you out on your lawn doing something, which is how I met him years ago. All of that is quite consistent with the picture that was portrayed for us in his interview on Saturday. So the consistency of that picture is very important to him, and for those reasons, I support Mike Solisi as our next chief.
Ellen, last but not least.
Thank you. So first, I just want to say I strongly believe and support the members of the Stowe Police Department. I grew up in another small town, and I know what it feels like to have true community policing. So I, I think the, the fact that where we're at right now, community policing is the sort of word of the day is really, is important, especially for a town like Stowe. So I will say that I went into this process believing that we should look outside for a new perspective. I thought it was time, and not for any particular reason what's not working in the current department, but that I thought we should hear from other perspectives, other towns, about how we could be doing better community policing. Given the issues that are raised nationally and statewide, I'm glad to see that we've been having this discussion that we'll be having a community review board, which will develop policies and practices to assist us in reviewing future concerns, as well as assisting the department in development of new policies. I am really grateful for the number of people who've offered their thoughts on our interviews and on the candidates. But I, on my other side, I want to really acknowledge that there were a large number of residents who have concerns from Ashland over Mike Solisi from some time ago, from over a decade ago, but they still have those concerns today, and I spend a lot of time listening to them. And I, and I want to just acknowledge that there's, there's some concerns that I think Mike is capable of addressing directly. But I do believe people mature and grow, and I see Mike as the right choice for us today. I believe he'll turn to people like Chief Dowden, who served on the search committee, for guidance, for suggestions, for that outside perspective that I think is still really important. But, you know, I think, I think we've got the right person for, for the town.
I think we've probably kind of said most of it. I appreciate everybody's thoughtful consideration on this. Do we, I suppose I'll take a motion.
I move that the selectmen offer the position of police chief for the Stowe Police Department to Michael Solisi, contingent upon successful contract negotiations and final background check.
Second. Denise, where we already have Mike working for us, do we need a background check?
I would say you don't need anything further. I mean, I have gone through his records. I've made sure there's nothing in there. I included that, obviously, in case we selected the other candidate.
Do they get recoried every year?
So, especially under the police as well.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we strike the background check, then?
Do you want me to remake the motion?
I don't think so, as long as you're...
It's a friendly amendment.
It's a friendly amendment?
Let's go, Sarah.
All right. And let's, let's do a roll call vote, and since Ellen went last, last time. Ellen?
I'm going to abstain.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. So I know I saw Mike on there earlier.
Mike is on here.
So Mike, I expect you will be, congratulations, and I expect that you will be negotiating with Denise, and congratulations. It's, you did a great job. You've been doing a great job for us, and I expect to see good work continuing from you.
Thank you very much. No, I, I really appreciate the support from the town, and I support from my friends and family, and from the police department. Thank you very much. And I hope to, I'm actually really excited just to continue what the work I've been doing and being part of the community. And as Ellen says, you know, we can, for those that want to have a conversation, I'll be more than happy to have a conversation. But I thank you guys very, very much. I won't let you down, and we're going to continue on the great work that we're doing as a police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mike. All right. Next up, we're going to discuss the, Denise had asked that we discuss dates for the annual town meeting and town election, and open the warrant for the 2021 annual town meeting. So Denise, I will let you...
Okay, so Linda, um, no, that's because her hand raised.
Hear from, I don't mind hearing from Linda. She usually has something good to say.
Linda, if you still want to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was proposing that we get the date scheduled for the town election, town meeting as soon as possible, so that I can start the process for nomination papers. And last year, at this time, prior to all of the pandemic issues that we had, we, we started that process, and we had the election scheduled for May, and that's how I worked off the, the dates that are required for turning in nomination papers and all. And so I'm recommending that we continue and choose the, choose the election date. It can be, it's Saturday, May 8th for this year under our new bylaw change. So I'm recommending that, that we start with that, and if we need to, if the legislature decides to allow us to move the date, we could move it to a later date in May or June. I'm also, I, I know that if we're looking at a town meeting date into a Saturday, I think that's a part of your discussion that you should consider, and then we don't have to worry about Monday nights, a multiple nights, Monday and Tuesday. So you, you may have to think about also, too, the whether that town meeting comes first, and then the election second. So I would not, I did say start with May 8th, but if you decided that you wanted town meeting on the 15th, and you wanted the election to follow, then we would schedule the election for that following Saturday, and I would just work the dates back from that. But I, initially aiming for May 8th. Okay?
Ellen would like to comment.
Ellen?
Yeah, I just have a question. Linda, are we going to be able to do, oh my God, what's the word?
Vote by mail.
Vote by mail, thank you.
Vote by mail?
Yeah.
Currently, the legislature has only voted to allow the vote by mail through elections on March 31st. The Clerks Association and many others in the Elections Division are trying to get that changed to allow vote by mail for elections through June 30th, so that we will be able to do that. So it's in progress to get that to go on, and I'm, haven't spoken directly to our Rep. Kate Hogan or, or Senator Jamie Eldridge, but that is a conversation. I do think that that's what they're going to move forward with for vote by mail. But right now, it's not part of it. But I had a conversation with Debbie, the Assistant Town Clerk, and we would think that we could still, even if we didn't vote by mail, we would set up our election location very similar to what we did in November. And we had approximately fifteen hundred people come through the polls on Election Day in November. We processed, I think it was thirty-eight, I want to say thirty-eight hundred vote by mail ballots. So I think in a local election, anywhere from thirteen to eighteen hundred would be what I would expect, so I think we could still move people through safely over the course of the day. If we do have vote by mail, I mean, right now, you're going to be voting on, on dates or talking about it. I mean, we could wait until the 26th if you actually wanted to wait a little longer and get a little bit more information and, and vote. But the, yeah, sorry, I lost, I had lost my train of thought for a minute there.
I think you were thinking of the election hours.
The vote by mail piece, I think, like I said, I think it'll, the legislature will vote for it, and I think that will work. But if we do have vote by mail, I would ask the selectmen to reduce the hours of the polls to the six hours like we did last year, instead of doing thirteen hours. But that's, the times of the, the election doesn't need to be set tonight. But at least talk about the dates.
All right, Denise?
So yes, so I am proposing that we do reschedule to a Saturday. I think it gives us more flexibility to have an outdoor component, whether that be entirely outdoor or indoor-outdoor, as it did last year. I think, quite frankly, the setup last year was perfect. I think you had the opportunity for people that wanted to be inside safely could be. So I do think that's important. I don't think that is quite feasible if we were to do that at seven o'clock on a Monday night. I am meeting with Kate Hogan on Thursday to find out if the legislature plans to do any municipal package like they did last year for a number of municipal processes, town meeting, the elections, the end of the year, the budgets, all that sort of stuff. When I spoke to her last week briefly, she wasn't sure what was in the works, so that's why we're, we're speaking again on Thursday. I do have a list of things to ask her about the hours and so on, and what they do plan to address. So I do think they will address that. After speaking with Linda, I think we, as of right now, unless the board is opposed to it, I think we should proceed with the election on May 8th, and then look to reschedule the town meeting to a subsequent Saturday. It could be the following Saturday. I, I just picked three Saturdays just to give some options as a discussion point. But I think it's fine, you know, if you have the election still and then, you know, town meeting a week after. I really don't think it impacts too much, because at that point, the warrants are already voted on and so on. So just something to discuss and have that conversation. I know, Tom, you may bring up that the moderator has sent in his suggestions. He seems supportive of a Saturday. He would like to see the entire thing outdoors, and as long as we use the electronic voting, he would like to make sure that that happens as well. So, so now I'll see what you all have to say and move forward.
Megan?
Linda, how do you feel about, given the fact that Linda and Deb do a ton of work around the election and town meeting, I, if we have it on the 8th, is the, is your preference to have town meeting the exact next Saturday, given the amount of prep work, or, or two weeks out? I'm just looking for your opinion.
Linda, you are mute. I'm not, I'm fine with the following. Actually, the town meeting prep is probably easier than prepping for the election.
Okay.
So I, I'm fine with, I think we're, I think we're fine with that, and anything like this in May is nothing compared to what we did in November.
Right. I'll just say, I am very hands-on when it comes to town meetings.
Perfect.
I have, in the last seven years, have been the only one to plan and organize it. So I will be more than happy to assist in any way and make sure that whatever day we choose, it's all squared away.
Yeah.
Courtney?
I'm in favor of Saturday. It sounds like the best solution for many reasons.
I'm, I'm not sure why I would be opposed to this. I tend to think that we, we need to be definite right now about the date for the election, and that anything we pick for town meeting is, by its very nature, tentative, because there's no way we're going to be out of this whole situation by May. But the town administrator seems to have the town meeting situation underhand, and we have a template from what we did last July for at least a partial indoor-outdoor. So I'm, I'm fine with this.
Are you there, Ellen?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I think these are good plans, so. Do we have a specific, are we saying 15th? Is that, I just missed?
I don't know if they've zeroed in on a date yet.
Okay, that's nice. But personally, I agree with the 8th for the election.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with the 8th for the, 8th for the election. I'm actually thinking that it might be prudent to plan on the June date for, you know, it should give us slightly better... You know, it should give us slightly better weather. It gives us a little bit more time to get over COVID and things like that. And then one selfish reason is I may be out of town one of those weekends. I'm not sure yet. But, you know, when I started thinking about the June 12th, it seemed to make sense because we should potentially have better weather. But I'm amenable to obviously a Saturday. And I think the indoor-outdoor component, you know, planning on that makes sense. And so I'm good with the, good with the concept. Do we need to pick the actual date today?
So you don't. I mean, we can vote it on the, at the next meeting. But I would vote that you open a warrant so we can at least start that process and then we'll finalize the, once we know the date, then we can decide when we will formally close the warrant. But I think you should at least open it and then we can discuss specifically the day you want to choose.
I think the sooner we let committees know the date, I mean, there's a lot of people planning on bringing things to town meetings. So giving them an extra month essentially from May 15th to June 12th could be significant.
I'm going to be a dissenting vote for a June. I, just because I would rather have it in May. I feel like as much as the weather might be better in June, it might also be really more. It was hot at town meeting in June and I feel like May would, and it was like maybe a week later this time around, or last time, wasn't it?
No, it was July.
Oh, it was July. Anyway, my, my preference would be a May date. I just feel like if, if we spread it out, I don't know. Just my preference. I think also the, whoever, I mean, we have an election in May and it would be nice for that, whoever to start and do, to be involved in town meeting. I don't know.
Any other?
So Megan?
Mm-hmm.
So technically, the election and town meeting tied together. So once town meeting is closed, then I'll be able to swear in those people who are elected.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you for the history, Linda.
Sorry.
And I'm, no, I'm always asking. Yes, I appreciate it. I still would prefer a May date, but not for those reasons though.
Any other comments?
Can I just clarify what Linda just said? So even though we're holding elections before town meeting, because of our charter, essentially, the election's ongoing to effect until after town meeting? Is that what I heard?
Linda, you want to read?
That's my understanding.
But that didn't happen this last time.
That's, that's.
But I, we can confirm that.
Well, I think last year.
I was there. I was.
Megan and Ellen were.
Ellen and I were at town meeting.
As part of the board.
As part of it.
Was there something in municipal legislation?
Well, I don't think that's how it goes. I mean, I.
Well, terms were extended.
Right, because of COVID. It was a COVID extension. This is, this, what we're doing now, I don't think is a COVID extension.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So I'm just going to throw out, May 22.
I like that date.
Mr. Chair, I move that we schedule annual town meeting for Saturday, May 22nd.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
Ellen votes aye.
So May 22nd it is. And we don't have to vote on the election because that's by charter, I believe, correct?
I do need the date on that.
Okay.
All right. So can we have a motion for the election?
Oh, hold on, I'll do that. It's, oh. Do I have to read all of the terms for this motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I move that the annual town election be held on Saturday, May 8th, 2021, at Center School, 403 Great Road, with the time to be determined. For the positions of Board of Assessors, one three-year term. Board of Assessors, one unexpired three-year term, expiring 2023. Board of Health, one three-year term. Neshoba Regional School Committee, one three-year term. Planning Board, one five-year term. Trustee Randall Library, two three-year terms. Board of Selectmen, two three-year terms. Housing Authority, one five-year term.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Ellen votes aye. All right.
Oh, sorry, I messed up. I did. I move that the board open the May 3rd, 20, nope, May 8th, 2021, annual town meeting warrant on January 12th, 2021, and close the warrant on March 31st, 2021.
I think you got the wrong date for.
Yes, so we're having.
Town meeting is the May 22nd, not the 8th.
Oh, whoops. All right, sorry, I scratched all of that. This is, I was just reading off the paper. I'm going to do this again.
And I suppose maybe, should we, because we are having it a few weeks later, can we extend?
Bump everything by a week?
Does that make sense?
So what is it, April 7th?
He's going to give you a date. There's a couple of weeks.
Oh, you're going to give me dates? Good, thanks.
I figured you didn't want to do it a third time.
So why don't you do April 16th?
Okay. And still, obviously, open up, okay. All right, take two. I move that the board open the May 22nd, 2021, annual town meeting warrant on January 12th, 2021, and close the warrant on April 16th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Ellen votes aye.
Tom, I actually, if anybody's injured, I just found on the town charter, the benefit of working at home. It says that the election is held after the dissolution of annual town meeting. The terms of office of those elected shall commence and the terms of those replaced shall expire the day following the election. If the election is held prior to the dissolution of annual town meeting, said terms shall commence or expire the day following the dissolution of the annual town meeting.
Okay.
So basically, anybody elected on the 8th would not be a selectman until, or if they were new people, until after town meeting is over.
Unless the legislature.
Article 3, Section 1C.
All right. Next up is discussion and approval of some policies that Denise has put together for our consideration. I will let you start out with that, Denise.
Sure. So I think they're fairly straightforward. The first one is a harassment and sexual harassment policy to replace the policy that we've had since the 90s. So obviously, it updates process, it updates examples of harassment and what someone should do if they either witness or are the victim of harassment. Additionally, it talks about how supervisors should go about handling it and what goes into the investigation and so on. So this would be, as I said, it would replace the policy that's in existence. It would go to all employees for them to sign. The signature page will go in their personnel file. And then any new employee coming on board will be given these policies for them to sign. I think I may have mentioned to you before, when I started and got my employee packet, I kept asking where the rest of it was because there seemed to be so much missing that I should be signing off on. And it's not a practice that we have followed. So if you worked here in 2001, when you signed the policy, great. But since then, there's no record of employees receiving the harassment policy that we had. So these will be part of the normal onboarding process, any policies that we adopt, any personnel policies. So, excuse me, so this is the first one tonight. Additionally, I have a workplace violence policy to talk about the creating an environment free of violence and harassment and intimidation and disruptive behavior and bullying, so on. Again, talks about what that is, how to go about dealing with it, how to go about disciplining somebody for it, and what would go into that. The last policy, which I did put a little note on, which we can certainly discuss separately if you'd like. I spent some time working on all of these policies, the third one being an anti-fraud policy. And as I was going to compile them, I was working on some of your past minutes and stumbled across the fact that a policy very similar to this was approved last January. After some discussion with employees, it does appear that it was, it was distributed through email, but it does not appear that employees signed off on it. There's nothing in files showing that it had been sent out or received. And quite candidly, until an employee sent it to me, I could not find a finalized version of the policy. So I would say we could certainly update it to this one. It's a little more updated from last year. It includes most of the same language as last year. But again, has the formal signature page that employees should sign off on, acknowledge that they've read and received it. And then that would go in their respective files as well. So I'm happy to discuss them or talk about these policies tonight. Or if you'd like more time, we could certainly discuss them at the next meeting.
Does everybody have a chance to vote for the policy?
Ellen has her hand raised.
I just, I thought, well, first, thank you so much, Denise, again, for bringing us into the 21st century with policies we probably should have had a long time ago. But a few of them, I think maybe all of them, but certainly the harassment one mentions that it covered, it includes volunteers, especially elected or appointed committee members. And I was just, wanted to confirm that. And then do we ask committee members, at the very least in terms of volunteers, to sign off on these as well?
We certainly can. I mean, I do think that committee members that are interacting with employees and vice versa should be covered by this policy. They should be free from harassment or free from harassing. So we could certainly make it part of their, when they get sworn in, they could be handed a copy of the policy.
Yeah, I don't know that we, I mean, I mean, we don't have, you know, employee files on volunteers. But I do think, you know, sort of the same way, I mean, we get some of the policies that are required for open meeting law and stuff, but maybe just, you know, a sheet that references them on the website so that every, every committee member knows that this is part of the policies of town.
Certainly.
Jim? I think this is great. I think this is part of Denise's continuing campaign on policies. And, you know, I've always been in favor of these. I just, for anyone who's, who's wondering, you know, oh, this just sounds like busy work or paperwork, it really isn't. You know, sexual harassment, so let's say we had one since the 90s. The fact is, they change as the law changes, as different kinds of things come about, the way you explain it, the examples you give. This policy here is written much more, in a much more understandable way than other ones that I've seen, other ones that I've drafted. And the, the process for what may seem clerical, you know, having everybody sign off on it, if you have actual litigation on it, that's one of the first questions they ask. Well, how do I know this person knew about it? And you need to, it, it's bad if you don't have it. But having it isn't enough. You have to show that this person was on notice of it. So this is important work and I'm glad she's doing it.
Now, I suppose I do have a question that came up with the, you know, I'll say volunteers and so on. What if an elected official gets this and just refuses to sign it? Does that mean that they?
No, I mean, I think, you know, to Ellen's point, we don't keep files. I don't think it's something that board members need to sign and return. But as part of their packet of, here's the open meeting law, they should be given copies of the policies. They will all be on our website. And I can certainly write a cover letter that states, you know, you are expected to follow the, you know, these policies while you're in office for, you know, your term.
You know, obviously.
You know, we really can't do much about an elected official. You can't remove them. But you could certainly, if there was something that, you know, rose to a level of legal action, we could show that we've given it out.
So we're all bound by sexual harassment laws.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so a volunteer. I was just playing devil's advocate on it. Well.
What do you do if somebody says no?
Are different.
You can't sexually harass.
Right.
The point of the policies is the workplace saying to people, and besides being liable to someone and possible criminal stuff and all that, we may fire you or take other action. And, you know, this is a workplace thing. We'll take workplace action.
Right.
If you're talking about an elected official, maybe an appointed official, your hands are kind of tied. But I, but I don't see any reason why we can't, as a statement of values, everybody talks about a statement of values. I think we already give everybody a packet, let's put it in there. I don't think we have to worry quite as much about getting the signatures because we can't really take any disciplinary action anyway, at least we're limited. But I think it's a very good idea to, to give it to them and have it on our website, which I'm assuming somewhere.
I do. Jim?
No. I do have a couple of other questions. Yeah, I'm actually good on the sexual harassment policy. I've got no issues with that. We take them up one at a time because I think on the, the second one, I've got a couple more questions. So if that's the case, I'm willing to accept a motion to accept the sexual harassment policy.
Okay. I move to approve the harassment policy as presented by the town administrator.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Ellen says aye. Does anybody else have any questions on the workplace violence policy? The only thing that jumped out at me a little bit, Denise, and I suppose it came under the definition of weapons. And then I think the, on the tying that to authorized exceptions to weapons. Because are defined to include all devices that are intended to threaten. Now, I think that can be interpreted any number of ways, including, you know, throwing a table at somebody, obviously. Inflict harm, injury, or death to an individual such as, but are not necessarily limited to firearms, knives, throwing devices, chemical and earth sprays, stun guns, and so on. You know, I always carry a pocket knife. That could be considered a weapon. I consider it a tool. I know some women carry pepper spray. And this policy is written specifically prohibits having pepper spray or a pocket knife, in my opinion, while you're working.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. It means that you're not going to use it to threaten someone.
If you took it out and waved it in someone's face, it's a weapon. But this is not prohibiting that by any means. It's intended to threaten, inflict, inflict harm, injury, or death, so.
Like a table could be considered a weapon if I pick it up and swing it at you.
Anything, good.
Like, anything, good.
Or even, or even speak violently about the use of table against somebody. I mean, seriously.
If you drop pepper spray into town building with the intent of using it on someone, then it would be a weapon. Then it would be covered by this, and it should be.
Well, the thing is, that means I can come in carrying an AK-47 as long as I don't.
No, it doesn't because you're not allowed to bring guns into buildings, Tom. Like, that's the law. You're not allowed to bring a gun into a public building.
Sure you can.
In Massachusetts, we don't have an open. Am I wrong?
If I have a license to carry, I could walk into the town building carrying a concealed weapon.
I don't think you can in this state.
You can't, you can't in a school.
I don't think you can in a federal building. I don't, so.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm looking for some clarification on it.
But I feel like this is a, Denise did not write this policy herself. This is a, this is a legal document, I'm assuming, that was lifted from something else, right?
And part of it is, I, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to flesh out, right? Because. Because this is saying that a weapon, if it's pepper spray, if it's a pocket knife, and Denise said, right, I can't threaten somebody with it, but if I have my concealed handgun that I am legally carrying, I can bring it in, right? I know my, my work specifically refu, says you cannot carry firearms at work. Can't have it on the town, on the property, but I can have my pocket knife, I can have pepper spray. You know, so I, I just want to make sure that we're not coming up with something that, and I don't know if these have been run by legal counsel or not, but, you know, it says authorized exceptions. An employee may only possess a weapon during the course of working hours under the following conditions. The definition of weapon is a knife. It is pepper spray.
Brought in with the intent to threaten.
All right? So as long as I bring in my handgun without intending to threaten anybody with it, it's okay. As long as I'm legally, I, I'm just trying to flesh out this stuff.
The policy, as I read it, covers incidents of violence using a weapon. So if an incident of violence occurs, using a weapon that was brought in for that purpose or used for that purpose, I'm okay with it. Now, I think it's an interesting question, that I do not want to hold up action on this, how this interacts with license to carry laws. I have no idea.
Well, as well as pepper spray, which generally makes stuff.
Well, I wasn't done. I, I want something written broadly. When there is an incident, if there's an incident, I personally don't want to be debating with someone about whether the pocket knife or the box cutter they brought in and used in an inappropriate way was a weapon. It is, if they use it in that method and intended to threaten with it, or intended to inflict harm with it. Denise?
And I just, again, these are employee policies, so I would expect that if there is an employee that needs to have a concealed weapon for some reason, that I would be aware of that. For instance, in my prior community, there were times that the building inspector wore his concealed gun because he was going to an enforcement situation. He's not threatening, he's not coming into a building, he's not causing harm on anybody else. He gave me a courtesy of a heads up. I would not expect, quite frankly, any other employee to have a concealed firearm on them. I don't see that there would be a situation that they would need to unless they said to me, this is happening and I'm, I'm feeling unsafe. But this is not for the resident coming in to pay their tax bill that may have a license to carry and has a concealed weapon. That's a different topic altogether. This is workplace violence and keeping our employees safe from other employees, quite frankly.
I had an incident where I worked. Someone with a license to carry kept a gun in their drawer, didn't tell anybody about it, and they got disciplined for it. And needless to say, the gun was gone. That was a violation of the workplace policy. It wasn't illegal, it didn't violate the license to carry, but it was a violation of the workplace policy and allowed discipline to be imposed. I don't have any problem with that.
Well, the, the thing is.
In that case, all the guy had to do was go to his boss and say, here's why I have a gun, and actually, there was no good reason, but if there had been, he just had to tell him.
Well, and the thing is. You know, some people will consider a firearm, right, as a weapon, whether they're, you know, to your point, whether you're threatening somebody with it or not. All right? But I'm looking at, a pocket knife is, if a pocket knife was in my, in my drawer?
I'd like this to go to a vote. I think we've talked about it enough.
All right.
Sorry, I respect your opinion, but I think we've talked about it enough. Let's, let's just put it to a vote.
I, I think that there could be clarifications and changes to it that make more sense. That's all. You know, and from a philosophical perspective, I have no issue with it. I just have an issue of a weapon being defined in a very ambiguous way.
Mr., may I make a motion? Mr. Chair, I move we approve the workplace violence policy as drafted by town administrator.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I will abstain. And we are on to an anti-fraud policy, which, as Denise said, I think that we have seen something very similar to this before. I didn't have any problems with it. Do we have any other discussion on there?
No.
Then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the anti-fraud policy as presented by the town administrator.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Ellen votes aye. On to minutes. Denise, thank you for getting all these minutes done up. Yes.
You skipped a few.
Hmm?
You skipped a few items.
Oh, did I?
Yes.
Oh, county administrators. Sorry.
That's okay.
I was just getting ahead of myself. I was getting excited.
All right, so a couple of things. At the last meeting, we talked about having a tour of Lower Village with Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan. That has officially been scheduled for Monday, January 25th at 1:00 PM. So there will be a walking tour of Lower Village that afternoon with the board and our legislature. Again, Monday, January 25th at 1:00 PM. So it will be before our next meeting, so I will send out a reminder as it gets closer and more details as to where we will meet. I assume just right in the parking lot there, but I will send that out to you all. Since our last meeting, we have implemented a new townwide notification system. So our system has been upgraded to the Rave Smart 911 system. You may have seen our notifications that I posted on our website and on Facebook. So this allows folks to register their email addresses, cell phone numbers, text numbers, to receive notifications that we put out in many different ways. The prior system, you could only send a phone number. This allows a much better interaction with our residents. Eventually, we can roll it out, that folks can sign up for the types of notifications they would like to receive. So if we put out recreational information, they can sign up if they'd like to get that, or only emergencies. We're just slowly rolling it out, but I would encourage everyone to sign up. The information is right on the front page of our website. It can also be found on Facebook or Twitter. Also, as residents should know from the call that I sent out last week, that Stowe has been elevated to a red alert for COVID. We are still seeing a high number of positive test results. I'm not sure where we will come in this Thursday. The numbers are released every Thursday afternoon. It was a little reassuring to know that Bolton also upgraded to a red community. I thought we were going to be the only, they were going to be the holdout in the area, but no, they are also red. So it's definitely widespread and hitting, you know, this area that we were a little bit excluded from for a while. We, we maintained that yellow status for quite some time. So I just ask folks to continue to stay vigilant. We're still seeing the positive results from the celebrations and gatherings around New Year's. Hopefully, that will slowly start to even out a little bit, but definitely stay vigilant. On that topic, there's been a lot of talk about vaccines. Myself and the Board of Health have been having regular communication with Department of Public Health, and they are still working on a public vaccination process and how that is going to look. They're not quite sure yet what will be needed and when for local mass distribution. They continue to push off the schedule because vaccines are harder to come by. As I'm sure you all know, our public safety folks in the state started getting vaccinated yesterday. For Stowe, we are scheduled for the 20th and the 23rd of this month, so our police are all scheduled, I believe, and our fire are almost all scheduled. So that's great news. So we are monitoring it. We are in discussions with the Neshoba Board of Health to figure out what the best plan will be for Stowe when the time comes. Again, there's, there's too many unknowns at this point, in talking with the department heads, in talking with the public safety folks, we're just not ready to have any type of plan. I encourage people to go to our website on the COVID-19 tab. There's a great chart that the state puts out, and they update their information every Tuesday and Thursday about the vaccination schedule, as they're moving people on and off and pushing folks around the, the timeline. I would also tell people, you know, don't look at what's happening in other states. Other states are handling things differently. Every state has the right to decide how the vaccines are being distributed. We do not have centers set up, like in Florida, where people are sitting in line. New Hampshire, they've moved it up dramatically because their population is lower. We are in a very specific schedule, and it's, it's spelled out quite nicely on the state page. So follow that link. When we have information to put out, we will certainly let residents know when and where they can be vaccinated. There is expected to be a public meeting scheduled for mid-February regarding the future of Stowe Acres, so keep your eyes posted for that. They are finalizing the date soon, so we'll have some information posted on when that will be. And I think the last thing is, just so the board is aware, our attorneys and members of the ZBA will be representing Stowe at an upcoming mediation for plantation apartments. So depending on the outcome of that mediation, the board may need to schedule an executive session. I do know that a number of you have conflicts regarding plantation apartments, and we will have to discuss that when and if the time comes. But for right now, we, I gave town council the go-ahead to at least participate in the mediation to see if we can come to a reasonable agreement to just move us forward. So I will keep the board posted on that and any additional meetings that we may have to have. And those are, that's everything I have for you this evening.
Liaison reports. Ellen, why don't we start with you?
Well, thanks. I'm sorry I'm not there, you guys. This feels very weird to be out here, but, so, let's see. Quickly, Rec Department met in December. People might not know that Maureen Hogan, who's been an amazing assistant over there, is leaving to get into, I think, the real estate business, I think I heard. So at this point, Laura is not going to be replacing her due to budget constraints, but we'll see about, after the, the budget passes in June or whenever. Cemetery Committee actually meets tomorrow, but I just want to thank again, if people didn't get a chance to see just how beautiful the cemetery looked after Deb Woods and her crew went through with the wreaths and the ribbons, it really was stunning, and it got even prettier when it snowed. So, Stowe TV luckily was there to document it. You should check out the pictures and really hope that that's an annual, didn't have anything much to do with it, but, but Deb's work was tremendous. Council on Aging, in spite of having their director out pretty sick for quite a while, did not miss a beat around the holidays, had a holiday dinner drive-through and a, I can't remember what they called, something on New Year's Day during around noon, where people drove through and got gift baskets and that sort of thing. So they are doing a remarkable job of keeping in touch with people in spite of not being able to have the drop-in center and the, and the things that used to bring people together. So really working on the isolation of our seniors. We had a magic meeting, but I think Denise, the most exciting part was that the first responders were going to start getting the vaccine as of yesterday, so that was great news. Concord is doing that. I don't know if there was anything else from them. Yeah, I guess that's all. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you, and I hope you feel better, Ellen.
Thank you.
Jim?
I don't have very much. Library Building Committee met last week, I think it was. Denise came to that meeting, essentially urged them to reexamine their use of the upstairs space that they have, which is kind of underused on the second floor as part of this whole project or before moving forward with it. As I've said before, the timeline has kind of moved out. We do not expect anything on this project at this spring, summer, whatever the hell it is, excuse me, I shouldn't say that, town meeting. I think that was pretty well received. What I think was also particularly well received was the fact of the town administrator coming to the meeting and giving her opinions directly. That was very good. And I know Denise is planning on attending a trustees meeting in March. I hope you're aware of that, that's not news to you. Finance Committee has started to meet. They've had a, I believe, a fairly short meeting to start their budget season. Thursday, capital planning has its first meeting. I'm looking forward to that. I haven't had a chance to go through all the materials. We've received a lot over the past week, two weeks, so at this point, I can't tell you whether it's going to be a big capital year or not. And that's it.
Courtney?
Let's see. Community Preservation Committee is hard at work. This is their busy season. Last night, they met with Stuart Saginaw, who is, is from the Community Preservation Coalition, and he gave a presentation on bonding CPA funds or projects. And that was a great presentation. I think the materials from that will be passed on, and we can have a look at them eventually in case where anybody's curious. He just did a nice job and made it, it was very clear, answered a bunch of questions like, the big burning question is if, if some, some money were bonded, and, and in the future, the town wanted to change the percentage of the surcharge or revoke CPA. But there are a couple of different mechanisms by which a bond would be handled, and they're sort of not a big deal. I mean, either, either the surcharge stays in place to satisfy the bond and no other projects are brought forward, or other versions of things like that. So that was, that was great. And it could possibly be a useful tool, as there are, they seem to have more projects than there are funds. Affordable Housing Trust met with Jesse from the Planning Board and a developer who's interested in this, in part of Stowe Acres, in the sort of ongoing conversations. And there was some talk about sizes of housing, you know, in the framework of affordable housing, there was some talk about, about what might be workable in order to try to address our, our 10% goal of, of safe harbor for affordable housing. So that is great to hear, that, that's part of the conversation of such a, you know, of a potential large development. Can I say a couple of words about Town Hall?
You can say all the words, because I was not.
Because you weren't there. Town Hall Restoration Committee is putting together a survey, a public survey, which will go out pretty soon. So I think also that'll be a useful tool in the process, just to invite input on a variety of topics. And that is what I've got.
The, you mentioned that there's more talk of bonding projects using CPA funds.
Mm-hmm.
How serious is that? You know, at least my recollection from my time on the Finance Committee, when they first put that in is, and maybe things are changing, but it was always a, we will never bond anything with CPA funds because we may cut it out tomorrow. So, that's, you know, I, I'm just bringing it up as a point of interest that, you know, because I, personally, I'm not in favor of bonding CPA projects, but, you know, save up the money, and make, make the tough decisions, but, so.
I suspect it'll be a topic of some discussion, and it does require a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think one of the things that's also interesting to note is that a I think one of the things that's also interesting to note is that a project that is going to have that proposal for its funding is, in some way, perhaps at a disadvantage because the two-thirds vote is larger, you know, it's a substantial margin. And so personally, I don't get a vote on this, but personally, I would think it would be prudent to propose bonding on a project that was kind of a shoo-in, that was a very popular project, because the votes would be more likely there already. Or if you really didn't like a project, it'd be easier to get rid of it. But, I mean, pardon the flipper mark. So I think, you know, it's really not up to me, but since the committee is really faced with, I think, a dilemma, what I see them going through is that they are, they have more requests than they have funds, and they kind of don't know what to do. And it's not like there's 20 people asking for $100,000, you know, there's six people asking for varying amounts. And so it's, in the time that I was on the committee, I, we didn't have that dilemma, and it was really up to the committee to vet the merits of the project and to guide the project toward the Town Meeting to be the best project it could be. And that's, it's a very different thing for CPC to do than to have to choose between projects based on their cost. Because it's really up to the town, you know, in my opinion. So anyway, that's the report for those guys.
Thanks. Megan?
So I, since we met last, have had two Planning Board meetings that I've been able to attend. And during the first Planning Board meeting, luckily, there was a representative from the Lake Boone Commission there, so I got to knock out two meetings in one. So the, the report from the Lake Boone Commission, I don't know that this has been mentioned, but they won a $154,000 Massachusetts Vulnerability Grant to monitor the health of Lake Boone. It's designed to deal with climate change. It's a two-year grant. In the first year, they're going to be using residents as citizen scientists to take measurements. They're contracting with the scientists to get the information processed. They're working to come up with more nature-based programs. They've reviewed over 20 years of data, and they're also working closely with the Lake Boone Association. So it was a really great grant that they were able to get from the state. And also during that meeting, they were supposed to be starting the public hearing for Stowe House Pizza, and that actually got pushed through the fifth. So that hearing was opened, and they needed to continue it to a future date because the, they're, oh, sorry, the engineer needs, needed to go back to the applicant and sort of work a few pieces out. An interesting thing that came up, Jim, you may find this interesting from our work on the Lower Village Project, is that the reason, so what's going on right now with Stowe House Pizza is that they're, they had to file a special permit because they did work ostensibly against, you know, they didn't, they did work without a permit. He thought he could do it based on the 2006 permit that was already on the business. And I guess that was to add, like, that permit was to add another building to it, to expand, an indoor building, not an outdoor building. I mean, he didn't go forward with it due to lack of water in Lower Village. So now they have had, like I said, they've had to continue it due to a lot of resident input, and so they're trying to work out like a screening, how to screen behind and how to just sort of work all the details out. So they, they will be meeting, what is it, next week, the week after? They've continued the hearing to them, but that's really all that's going on. I have not.
I need to say, every time I go to get a pizza, I get questioned about it.
Oh, me too.
I just, I don't know.
Which is weekly. My husband goes, he's like, "What's going on?" Megan, I'm like, "I don't know. I don't have an answer for you." But I do, but I do want your pizza. And yeah, and then obviously, the Police Chief Search Committee has been wrapped up, so that's done. And I don't have anything else right now. Well, we were talking earlier about Tri-Town, and it's possibly going to be in February so that we can discuss the budget, but we're still working out a date about that, so that's it.
And I have very little. In case nobody's heard, we've got a new police chief.
Mm-hmm.
And we have two new fire lieutenants, and I'll be attending a Board of Health meeting this Thursday. And so that takes care of it for me.
I think Ellen had one more thing she wanted to add.
I just wanted to jump in on the CPC discussion just briefly. I think we might have talked about it, I can't remember if it was during the meeting or afterwards, but I would love to have a meeting sooner than later with members of the CPC and the Select Board, because I think, Courtney's talking about sort of how it's changing in terms of both the demand on the money, but also how the decisions are being made. I think that it's time for us to be doing something similar to what Capital Planning does in terms of sort of the five-year lookout, you know, what's coming down the road. I mean, we, we talk all the time about our golf courses and the farms and seeing those as like really super high priority, but, you know, I worry that when those finally come up, well, and it might be coming up soon, we, we won't have the funds available because we've sort of just said yes to everything that came up that looked okay. And I think we need a little more strategic thinking about it. So I just wanted to get that on the radar and ask that we put that on a meeting agenda sooner than later.
I concur. So Ellen, they were, CPC was scheduled to come before the Board at the first February meeting. I heard from them today that they will not be ready. They've asked to come to the second February meeting. They want some more time to digest the discussion they had last night, to meet again as a group, to figure out what they need from the Board, what they're looking for. And so February 23rd, I believe it is, they will be coming before the Board.
Thank you, Denise.
I just want to say that in the meeting, they did talk a little bit about our being part of the process of choosing or deciding which projects have priority, and I had a sense from the committee that they feel that it's, that really it's their purview to do this, and I believe it's part of the way the committee was charged when it was formed, that it's, it's sort of not our business to tell them what to do, so.
I only question that only, sorry.
It's fine, it's fine.
My only question about that is that they are not elected officials, and that, and that, that's a lot of money, right? And so I totally get that, but like, that's my knee-jerk reaction, is like, well, hang on a minute, like, these are people that were just, are on this committee, I don't know how they ended up on the committee.
Okay, I'll explain.
And I don't understand that, so you can definitely explain that to me. But that's, again, my knee-jerk reaction is like, hold on a minute, like, we've been charged with a lot too in our role.
All right, ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we just heard that it's coming up on an agenda that's in the future.
Yep.
So I could fill you in later on?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll talk.
But I tried. See, we would have been out of here half an hour ago if Denise hadn't reminded me. First set of minutes.
Can I just add a quick disclosure? So I did not, so the minutes that were previously done, that were still submitted by Maureen, I did not review. I do not know if they were accurate. These were in her file as being completed, so, but I, we could not find anywhere that they were voted on. So I did, I personally did the minutes of the 26th and the 29th, but I cannot attest to the first few sets. I just wanted to make that known.
The first one, I don't think that, I don't recall us voting on that set of executive session minutes.
Why was that executive session? Just from the content, it doesn't read as something that, maybe I'm missing something.
Well, it was, we were discussing, and it's passed now, so it's fine for it to be out in the public, but we had a meeting to discuss what we were going to make an offer for on a piece of property. And so therefore, it wasn't done in public because it was a negotiating session.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
There's one specifically for negotiations about real estate.
Yes.
Yep.
Right, right.
So, so the minutes of February 25th, 2020, they looked fine to me.
They looked fine to me to approve and to release.
Hmm?
To approve and release.
Yes. And that's one of the things, Megan, you may not know, is that on executive session minutes, we gen-
I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, okay.
So I'll make a motion, just to speed this along. I'll make a motion to approve the exec- So, point of order. Here's something we've debated for years, and I do not know the answer about this, and as a lawyer who used to practice in this area, I should. We're about to approve executive session minutes in open session. Is that how it's okay?
Yes.
Because what if I had a question, this is the kind of thing we discuss at conferences, what if I had a question about it, but to ask my question, I need to disclose something that was in the minutes? So in the, I mean, I'm happy to move forward on this, it's just something to think about. In the past, what we've done here is approve executive session minutes, but only in executive session, which then starts this bizarre thing where then you have to approve the minutes of the meeting where you approve the minutes.
I've actually never heard of that.
Right, okay. So this is fine, let's all just be careful.
And be careful it's all passed.
That's what we used to do with my board too.
All right. Then let's just do that.
But if we wanted to, it makes more sense to me.
I will move the minutes of February 25th, 2020, executive session as written and to be released.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, let's see, because I don't think Ellen or Megan were there. If you want to abstain, you're welcome to.
Oh, I need to, like-
But we don't need to. We can still approve them even if we weren't there, is my memory.
Yes, it is true.
Okay.
Is that right, Jim?
Okay. All right.
We just can't make comments on them because we don't know anything about what happened.
Right.
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 So it was all in favor? Aye. Everybody good? Aye. All right. That was, now we're on to June 6th. Oh, we haven't done June 6th yet. Anybody want one? Anybody have one?
I move to, no, does anyone have any changes?
They look good.
I was good.
Great. I move to accept the meeting minutes of the June 6th, 2020 meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any changes?
That looked good to me.
These look fine, and these should also be released, right?
They should, I mean, my contract's online. I have no problem releasing these.
And that's one of the, one of the reasons, you know, I, you know, I meant to actually talk to Denise about it, but when I looked at these sets of minutes, it's like, this is all past history, so, and, you know, there was nothing left to keep it, so, fine, do it, you know, do them during open session. But the only thing I found was one typo on the right-hand side, annually, just T, just a typo. I'm not, I don't think, I wouldn't bother holding it up for it. Says four personal days annually, T was.
I think if I and it is supposed to be there.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the minutes of the June 18th, 2020, executive session as amended and to be released.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So Jim, you're just getting impatient because that's, that was Megan's job tonight, right?
Sorry.
It's fine, I defer.
Yeah. The door's also open, I'm getting cold.
All right. June 26th, 2020 minutes, I was fine with those.
Yep.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the June 26th, 2020, meeting as drafted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. June 29th, 2020 minutes, I was good with them.
Yep.
Everybody else good?
Yep.
Yep.
Megan?
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the June 29th, 2020, meeting as drafted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And December 8th, 2020, I was good with those. Lots of pages.
I had a comment on the report about the Town Hall Restoration Committee, the easement discussion. This is technicality, sort of a typo. Sorry, looking for where it is in the paragraph.
Page two.
I'll let it go, I can't find it. It's on page two. It's not important.
Do you want to hold off? What is that next meeting?
Basically-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's stated, it's stated that it's an easement for a shed or something, instead of it's being an easement for the equipment between the Town Hall and the shed. So.
Oh, so possible locations for the equipment shed.
Yeah, so it's not an equipment shed, it's just the equipment.
It's the actual equip, yeah, it's not going to be like pretty.
Thank you.
It's going to just be like, I can't remember what they're called.
It's the big ugly things that you have behind the town building, the machines that, the air exchangers.
Yep. So you want to strike the word shed?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
That was awful hard.
I think the, sorry, right before that, though, it's willing to enter into an easement request, because I think the ask of us is, it got, it's a little, I don't know.
Yeah, sure, a request for an easement.
Yeah, because Town Meeting has to authorize the formal easement. So we can add a request to that, and then the next sentence, remove the word shed.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
Anything else?
This is super nitpicky, but Jamie Eldredge's name is spelled wrong on the bottom of page five.
Which page, maybe?
Five.
I think.
Yes, it is, okay.
I think his mom shops at the store.
Yeah, I'm sure he appreciates a looking out for.
Well, you know.
All right. If everybody's good, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the, or accept the meeting minutes of the December 8th, 2020, meeting as draft, or with amendments.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The only thing that I saw in there that I was actually going to ask Denise about, but I forgot before the meeting, was the notice of responsibility. Is there anything that we need to do with that?
No, so we've already been working on it. So as you'll recall, Town Meeting authorized the funding. You are signing the bond paperwork on that tonight. We knew this was coming. We actually thought it was going to come to us much earlier, but due to- We actually thought it was going to come to us much earlier, but due to COVID, there was a delay. So we got the formal notice of responsibility. The firm that we've hired is working, and they are now setting up, they're going to set up their site visits and working with the homeowners. I have Town Council working on an agreement to allow access to property. They will take over the, they meaning the town under our agreement with them, the bottled water distribution, and they will start the sampling. So it's just part of the process for this project, and like I said, we knew it was coming, and we were surprised that it took so long to actually receive.
I just get nervous when I see it addressed specifically to me.
You're the chair.
Well, one way or another, I get asked the question.
Get concerned.
Before they come with, for me with the butterfly nets.
No, it's all good.
So, did anybody else have anything else in correspondence? In that case, all we need to do is sign a couple of things, right? And we should probably do that, but I'm just going to wait. No?
No, it doesn't require a vote, so I just put it on there just for the formality of it.
All right. In that case, there were-
Do you need me to come in tomorrow to sign anything?
We just have the majority of the Board, so you don't need to come in if you don't want to.
Okay. Great. All right.
Are you entertaining a motion?
Motion to adjourn, possibly?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.